It could be located up there, which is like from a plan to stretch.
Cash flow is just a lot.
It just will fall by the thread.
Entrance right. You can't have a car.
I did.
And 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 from our design, like I think.
I don't understand why.
Um.
I don't know.
Could you like as far as.
Yeah, sure.
After we choose another design.
They want to handle that.
All right. You might.
At that point, why would.
I mean, she.
I don't think you may have a lot of.
Yeah.
I think some little.
Yeah.
You know.
You might.
Whatever.
At that point, why would.
I mean, she.
I don't think you may have a lot of.
Yeah.
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 A little.
Yeah.
A little curl.
Yeah.
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 No.
Yeah.
No.
And I assume they want I assume they want to write write for their access. Right. Yeah.
I don't know.
I was like.
I don't know.
That's all. I don't think it's the real.
You know, it's because they don't want to do a short.
Yeah.
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 So but that one.
Yeah.
She wants to.
Yeah.
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 You don't want to have no one know.
Yeah.
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 So we could bring those.
Yeah.
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 Um, we recommend.
We need other people walking the message.
You know.
Um, so.
Over thirty six dollars.
What do you want?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's still.
Yeah.
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 I heard about it.
Yeah.
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 What is going on?
Yeah.
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 Oh, like I said, yeah. Well, if I go in my.
Yeah.
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 So.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean.
I didn't.
I didn't.
Yeah.
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 The only thing I'm trying to make sure.
Yeah.
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 I mean, that was.
They have a reason.
That was.
Yeah.
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 Whatever they're doing.
I figured out a terrible.
Yeah.
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 All right.
All right.
If you would like.
Yeah.
I'll send your.
Yeah.
Okay.
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 No.
Yeah.
We're driving nuts.
Okay.
City.
You.
For.
When sidewalk.
Yeah.
Try some.
Get a little strand here with green light.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Normally.
I like dropping it back or whatever.
Where?
So.
Make sure.
Find.
That's the one that.
I'm just.
Out in.
Cool.
Back out.
Yeah.
Well.
And then it doesn't.
I've been rolling it up on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And it keeps it from fogging?
I have the anti-fog.
I love the different.
I'll bring that.
But that.
You want more of a small.
There.
The less.
And I'm trying to be.
Because.
Oh.
Yeah.
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 Well, it's mine. You can see it right here all the time.
Yep.
We're going to try that one.
And it's greasy, greasy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Try that one.
Yeah.
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 I'll have to, yeah.
Yeah.
Where do you get it?
Uh, I don't know.
I want to get to it.
Yeah.
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 Ah.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
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 Oh, okay, because I don't have a fiber.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
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 I'm going to give a little bit of update.
Yeah.
In the hours.
You need to ask me what is.
And it's kind of mom and then you got the green light. No, I've been letting people down. And.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I've been letting people know that, um, if.
How are you, Brandon?
I'm well, you?
Good.
Good.
And boy.
Yeah.
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 I think I know that.
Uh.
I'll allow it.
I didn't put on the department heads because we just had the report, so. But there's anyone who can relay back, but they were. Katie had the offer, but she was scheduled to hop anyway.
Okay.
And then it comes on.
Perfect.
No worries.
And yeah, you should.
It's going to come for me.
It's an.
I'll.
Do you know that? It should pick you up.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah.
So. Is the is the video on?
The video is on.
Okay.
Um.
Who needs help with my?
Sure.
You need help with your mic?
No.
You added yourself.
Yes, too.
All right.
Come on.
Mic's on, everybody. Green light all around. And, yeah. You added that video out, right?
Uh, that's.
Ready to go.
Yeah.
I can hear you.
No.
No one's talking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
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 Call the city council meeting of February eighteenth, twenty twenty five to order. Let's please rise for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We're moving to approving the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the consent agenda. Motion, an entertaining motion to approve that.
So move. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is our twenty twenty five south side improvements. We're going to hear about the overview of the project plans.
Mr. Mayor, just so you know, there's type on the agenda, it should be north side.
Uh, I I thought that was. That seems strange, but.
Cool.
I got it. North side.
All right.
The other side.
Um. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, thank you for having council council meeting tonight. Um, in your packet is our plans for your consideration tonight for plan approval and also, um, to start the advertising to advertise this project in the in the paper. Um, jumping back here, project limits for the twenty twenty five north side improvements. We have, uh, Third Avenue from John Street to Murphy, uh, skipping the highway portion. Fourth Avenue from right in front of Public Works, skipping the highway all the way down to the Norman intersection. Broadway from Trump Highway twenty three to the intersection of Penn Street. Uh, Murphy from Third to Broadway and then Parent Street from Third to Broad, or sorry, from Fourth to Broadway. A little background on the project, if you remember from when we were presenting the feasibility study, um, this project initially was in the C I in the two thousand nine C I P slated for two thousand eleven. Um, and has slowly been bumped back year to year based off other priorities that the C I S company has has ran into. Um, this project, the purpose in need of this project is to improve, um, deteriorating streets and underground utilities, improve drainage, and also addressing the A D A deficiencies that we may have. So with that, I'd like to kind of just jump right into the plans you have in front of you. Um, the second sheet is our table section. In here, most of these will match what we had in our feasibility study. There are, there are a few differences. I'll point those out as we as we get to it, but, um, to the top two table sections there are for Fourth Avenue. The top one being from for the north part, uh, or or north of the highway. You have your forty two foot wide roadway, which is narrower than the fifty foot that I believe in the feasibility study, we had originally had fifty foot wide matching the existing. Uh, based off county rec or county comments, we can narrow that down to forty two to match the rest of the streets in the in the area. Um, that will have roughly an eight foot wide boulevard, six foot wide sidewalk on both sides. And then the south side, south of the highway, there is a portion that we are reconstructing due to our our sanitary sewer and water main connections. Um, and that is again, that corridor will match the existing existing width. There isn't much room to narrow up because you're because you're tying into the existing, uh, intersections at twenty three and then also that bridge right there. So that will be matching existing, which has kind of that with those wider sidewalks right behind the curb. And then the third one from the top is is the kind of our overlay section for the Fourth Avenue kind of right in front of Public Works there for that, uh, couple hundred feet. Essentially, we are just remove that, remove the existing four inches of two minutes and then replace it. Lower that. The last one on that sheet is, uh, the Broadway and Third Avenue table section. Again, there we have the forty two foot wide roadway. That one didn't hasn't or didn't change in our from our feasibility to now. And essentially, the, um, on Third Avenue only is is the, um, is sidewalk on both sides. And then Broadway only has sidewalk on the east side. Typical stand typical footprint of that Broadway will have roughly a twelve foot boulevard matching the exist that that, uh, that sidewalks are matched the existing kind of layout of that of the existing sidewalk due to those bump outs for the parking on the north and south side. We didn't want to kind of have the sidewalk kind of jog in and out. Want to keep consistent, matching kind of existing footprint right now. Um, Third Avenue, those will have roughly a, um, on the north side of the highway, roughly a four foot boulevard. So that sidewalk will come in a little bit, uh, which helps with the concerns we had during our kind of our public engagement process of of parking and and making sure we still have parking in that area. So we we are bringing in a little bit, um, and maintaining an eight foot boulevard on the south side. Again, due to kind of the constraints on on with that being only one block due to the constraints on the south side and north side, south side at the intersection of John Street where it kind of lines up with going going south down Third as you continue in the in when we replaced that in two thousand eighteen on the Dewey Street project. Um, and also at the box over at North End, we kind of, again, don't want to be going in and out. We want to keep it consistent. So, um, footprint of that south will be maintaining the exact same, basically the same footprint as the existing conditions. Um, all of those essentially jump into the actual instead of the section of the roadway. Um, we have our kind of our our standard fully fully section that we've been using the last few projects where we have three and a half inches of bit over fifteen on our local streets and then four four inches of bit over fifteen on our on our kind of larger Fourth Avenue County County road there. Uh, in the bottom corner, this is one that I do want to draw attention to. Um, in the feasibility study, we did have, um, kind of an inverted inverted crown to that alley. When we got into design and laying these out profile wise, it it was, uh, a lot flatter than I anticipated. Um, and so in order to have proper drainage with that inverted crown, which already is already is kind of a tougher construction, especially in an alley. In order to have that, we have to have vault points in an alley. And I didn't really, that that doesn't seem like a best solution for our to fix our drainage issues that we have. Um, and so we're we end up deciding with would be kind of just having a tip section with a curb on the one side, a kind of a smudgeable curb on the one side to kind of give a pathway for all that water to go down. Um, it's more of a smudgeable because it's so it's in that because it's in an alley. Um, and that way it can channelize that drainage. And we do have a profile that is that will get that does get the water out, um, because on the flatter side, like I said before, but with this type of construction, it having a curb in place is a lot easier to to work with and construct at a at a flatter grade than this at the painting machine. Um, so this is our our best case scenario for those alleys. Any questions on any of those before I put the next page?
How high is that curb?
Uh, it is a R four twelve, which four inch, the four is four inches high.
Okay.
Yeah.
Am I sloping that to the curb?
Yes. From from the west side to the east side.
Right.
Yep.
You won't have too much rain, too much runoff there for the four inch curb?
For to stay in that four inch curb.
Right.
Yeah, we should, yeah, we should be good.
Okay.
Yep.
So the, so I understand the specifically to the alleys. Uh, we're adding curb to one side?
One side. And that's only that's different than the feasibility study because we had four, we had everything kind of coming to the middle. And then we have an inverted crown for a drainage and stays in that kind of hard surface area.
Yep.
Does get all out. And we 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 switch it to go and sheeting everything to the east side. We didn't have a curb there to kind of have that channelized area, then it would just spill out into the neighborhood to the the grass. And it would eventually drain away with our with our source, but, um, it also that provides the, we don't really want to be channelizing water flow at a point where we are going from hard surface to a impervious or a pervious surface, like a grass.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because now it'll get underneath our section and the terrain will work faster. So.
And we'll do that curb down the the whole stretch of the all of the alleys?
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Any concern about plod mark?
No. I did.
Better.
I did it. And I didn't catch it, Terry. Are cars going to be over some of that?
Yes.
Right in the backyard?
Yep. Yep, that this, uh, this R R style curb, mid dot curb is a smudgeable curb.
Okay.
Yep.
That's a smudgeable. I want to make sure by the model of that style. No, following my said, it won't be.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Um, the next sheet is handling our our other kind of sections in our in our product limits. Top one being Murphy Street. Um, Murphy was one that we adjusted from our feasibility, or we talked about during our feasibility study, um, when we came back a second time to present that. And, um, so that one was adjusted to meet what we had talked about at the end of our at the end of our feasibility, essentially where we are just doing sidewalk from from Third to Fourth on the north side of the road. Uh, eight foot boulevard, uh, thirty six foot wide roadway. And then between Broadway and and Fourth, it's still a thirty six foot wide roadway, but no sidewalk. Parent is also one, uh, this is one I want to draw attention to as well. This one, I believe, in our feasibility study wasn't not wasn't also a thirty two foot wide roadway. Um, when we after our total, after we laid things out, um, this was one that in order to to help with the parking concerns that we had that were brought up, um, with widening the roadway. Um, S C H, myself, worked with city staff, um, on kind of shrinking that footprint down to a thirty eight foot wide roadway. That will give us kind of that meets our kind of minimum urban section for a for a for this kind of this this style road, uh, minimum minimum width for an urban section roadway.
Thirty eight or twenty eight?
Uh, twenty eight. Did I say thirty eight?
Yeah.
I apologize. Twenty eight foot wide. Twenty eight foot wide roadway. Um.
And what street is that?
That is Parent. So essentially, that will have to help with the parking, that will have that curb line on the south side of the road, essentially matching the existing batumis. And then the third, then build the roadway from there going to the north and 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 tie into there. The driveways on the north side didn't really have, based off what we're looking at, didn't have a concern or there isn't an issue with with parking over on that side. So.
And that's connecting from Third to Fourth?
Uh, Fourth to Broadway.
Fourth to Broadway?
Yep.
The two in between?
Sorry, what? The street in between, uh, Parent, that's Parent between Fourth, County Road and Broadway.
So. And Broadway. Going west to east?
Yes.
Okay. What's the one, what's the one that goes from Third to Broadway?
Murphy.
That's Murphy.
Murphy, yep, sorry. And that one is, uh, thirty two feet wide.
Thirty two feet?
Yes.
And then Parent is the is the?
Thirty six feet. I I misspelled. Thirty six feet wide.
So Murphy thirty six?
Yes.
Parent twenty eight?
Twenty eight.
Why are they so different?
Um, we narrowed.
Because they both don't have sidewalks, correct? Sorry.
Correct. We narrowed, we narrowed Parent due to the, um, like I said, the parking concerns that were on on Parent. Where we had, uh, the driveways on the south side were very limited in their what they had for parking.
Okay.
Um, and so in order to minimize minimize the impact on the north residents of that street, we we narrowed that roadway to met to essentially meet our minimum standards. And then one we added at the end of the feasibility study, uh, was the overlay over on Thirteenth Avenue. That essentially is just milling off the existing four inches of tumis and putting it back there. There'd be some slight crown adjustments to make sure we have not so flat cross slopes on our road. Um, but essentially, it's just milling overlay with our, as we talked about, you know, the reason the point we brought that one is was was they had that drain tile on the on the east side of the roadway. Yeah. Um, next sheets just kind of jump into our, um, what we have for our our utility improvements. So the first page thirty eight through thirty eight through forty three are sanitary and water. These improvements match what we have in our feasibility as far as replacing the water main on Third Avenue from John Street to the kind of that intersection at at Murphy. Uh, and then also now so extending a new water main, making making kind of a loop connection on Murphy from Third to Fourth. Uh, replacing the water main on Fourth Avenue and then we're also replacing the water main under Broadway. Same for sanitary sewer, other than the south block of Third Avenue. That's sanitary sewer has been replaced in, uh, around the probably early two thousands. I grew up, or, um, Mark, I believe, early two thousands or late nineties.
Where was?
Third Avenue.
South of the highway?
South side of the highway, yeah.
Uh, ninety ninety four.
Ninety four. Yeah. So replacing in a recent, uh, recent four. Yeah. Match a modern kind of material, so not replacing that one. Um, but north side of the highway on Third Avenue, north side of the highway on Fourth Avenue, north side highway on Broadway as well. Any questions on the sanitary sewer and water main?
Has everybody been hooked up yet or responded to lead service?
Lead service?
Yes.
Um, no. There, I think there are three that we are still trying to make contact with. Um, and I think of those that plus, I think, two more that we haven't scheduled with yet. So if we have any side contact, I think some of them has, like, one had kind of a recent, uh, health issue, and so we're kind of working through that right now, but, um, we still need to, as part of the kind of the the construction phase, would be more of like reaching out and identifying which ones want to hook up for the the private side or the private sanitary side stuff. So we'll have, that's going to encompass pretty much everybody versus just the thirty some that we had for lead service. So we'll make, if we don't get it in the near future, we'll get it done for sure. Any other questions on sanitary and water? I didn't mention, but it's always been a part of the project. Um, we are jacking boring underneath the highway. Um, on Third Avenue with the water main and then on under Fourth Avenue, under the highway for sanitary and water. And the reason why we're we're doing that is so we don't rip off the highway and and create that heavy.
Jared?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to just mention about the bridge that?
As far as boring it or?
It's gonna be, no, it's gonna be a separate later project unfortunately, but that's so we're not gonna touch that area?
Yeah, so I was gonna touch on that.
Okay, do it later then.
Uh, so let's let's jump to then that, if there's any any more questions on sanitary and water, um, let's jump to page forty-four then. For the uh, sewer where we start this street and storm sheets. As Mark was was pointing out there, um, when we were originally going through the feasibility study, um, the initial communications were with. The county on and they were gonna replace that box cover there just south of the highway on Third Ave- on Third Avenue, right at the swimming pool creek. They had their plans done. Unfortunately, they were they were not selected for their their funding this go around. They are gonna be on a waitlist, so potentially it might go this summer, next summer, whatever time frame, but. As far as keeping our project moving forward with what we had, uh, there is a slight difference of connection there. In the feasibility study, we were just gonna connect to what they were gonna step up from the box cover. Now with this project, we are showing our pro- our city project having that kind of that discharge into the east side of the creek there. We had to do that because the existing storm sewer that's underneath Third Avenue, uh, we were unable to make with our new flows or. To to meet standards for our storm sewer, the grade of that pipe needed to be lower than what the existing pipe is going to the box cover. And so this was the best solution for us. Uh, now when it comes time to replacing that box cover. The county project will have to check. And or potentially salvage and reinstall what we're installing with this this go around, just to make that, because that's such a tight kind of footprint.
Two questions?
Yes.
Does that lower the? Does that lower than by default the cost of the overall project? Or was that something the county is gonna be paying for?
It will increase the project cost on this one, um, probably about seventy-eight thousand bucks. I put that number out there based off of depending on what we get for bid results, but but as far as adding a structure, twenty-some feet of pipe in a in a apron. You know, end section essentially, um, it's about eight grand as far as that little portion there as far as in our estimates currently. But we have been working with the the county on if we pay for this portion, can that go towards our, is it is it ten grand Sarah?
Twenty.
Twenty, it's ten for construction, ten for design?
That's twenty a piece, isn't it?
That was twenty.
Ten, oh, twenty total, yeah.
Either way, the the twenty thousand dollars that the city is chipping for that box cover. We've been working with the county that this dollar amount for this portion can go towards that cost.
So that box, that bridge, that's more of a county thing?
Yes, correct.
Correct.
Than it is a city thing?
That's the one that I had mentioned, um, the bonding bill has the money in it. We need the bonding bill passed. We're on the waiting list until they replenish that. The county taps into those bridge funds and we just pay our portion upfront, you know, it's just a flat rate and then they get money from the state to help offset.
So when that bonding money becomes available again, that's when we can approach the county on finishing that part of the project?
Like if it were to come available, let's say this year, you know, they pass something and it could get done this fall, we would try to get it done if we could. Because I think it can be done whatever.
In a much shorter timeframe than our project, right? It's not gonna take all summer to do their box cover.
Okay.
I haven't laid it out in kind of working day calk or anything on that box cover, but I can't imagine it's gonna be more than a month.
We just didn't feel it was. A delay that we should delay the whole project with. That's why we've come up with the workaround.
Oh, that makes sense.
And if the county is willing to accept the fact that the cost of this can go towards that city cost in the future, then I think it's a win-win for the city.
Yeah, when will we find that out?
As far as if it's gonna be eligible?
Yeah, if they would accept that.
I mean, in conversations, they said they would. We don't, I guess we don't have anything in writing yet. Personally, like a agreement like we have with the county on the on our Fourth Avenue stuff, but.
Sure, that's that seems fair enough, okay.
Um, other than that, uh, storm sewer wise, pretty matches pretty much our same footprint that we had in the feasibility study. If replacing the storm sewer on the south block of Third Avenue, making that connection from our rich, from our spot where we ended on. The Dewey Street project at the John Street intersection there, up increasing the pipe size to match our needs in that area. And then discharging in the creek and then on the north side tying into the existing storm sewer that runs underneath the highway. On the east side of Third Avenue and then stepping up a little bit up Third Avenue to catch drainage as it gets to the intersection of of the highway.
So. Would this be considered an upgrade on for the storm then? Because years past, we have had issues of flooding in that area.
Yeah, we are, to answer your question, the the on the south side in particular.
Yep.
I think that is an existing, so there are twelve or fifteen inch. Pipe going going from our connection to Dewey Street on or Dewey Street project on Third on John Street to that box cover area. We are based off our calcs for the drainage needed for that area, it's a twenty-seven inch. So it's almost double or at least double, you know, the pipe size in that section. And you would see it as you work through this, most of the storm sewer that we're replacing, so there is there's there's much on Broadway as far as existing, but there is on four. Most of that is fifteen, twelve or fifteen inches in diameter. I think as you as we're cross, as we're coming to the intersection of Fourth and Broadway, I think we're up to twenty-four inch. So we are increasing the capacity that's of that pipe due to the needs in the area and.
So in the creek there, we won't, will we be digging that out any or are we just gonna leave it the same depth?
The.
The creek area along the south side?
Our 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 pipe installation or the box cover?
Box cover.
The box cover, I believe that plan is to extend the box cover. And I think it's, I think they are slightly lower due to grain concerns, but. Essentially what we are doing, we're gonna tie into that 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 south bank and discharge towards that. Alright, um, the next sheet's Murphy. You know, there everything that we have in our in our feasibility kind of matches what what we proposed there. A lot going on on Fourth Avenue for the most part and kind of like Murphy and and you'll as you'll see Murphy and Parent kind of shed away towards the side streets. At the pickup on those side streets. One thing I do want to point out, um, on essentially all of ours, uh, which is a little bit different than if you remember our Dewey Street project. We do have a pretty sub, you know, I don't wanna say different than Dewey Street, different than normal urban reconstructions in a residential town, their city limited area. Uh, we do have put a bit of a a cut on most of these and that's due to the the existing kind of more rounded. Cross sections of the road, also the wider footprint. In order to maintain the drainage to the road. When you narrow it, you kind of have to lower that center line to get to everything kind of come, so that's why we have that that cut, so. Fourth Avenue, except pretty much matches the existing, as you can, I do want to point out again, you know, we have the existing, it is a twenty-one inch coming from the north end on Fourth Avenue. Connecting to an existing twelve inch that goes into highway, so it takes that there is that. Shows that improvement that we have on our in our section that we are increasing the capacity of that area. And then providing that that capacity, that larger capacity for that that run until it necks down to highway. That highway, we're not, we're not concerned with the neck down as far as right now, we don't have any flooding issues in that highway area right there, so that twelve inch should be okay. And that will be replaced when midneck comes along and replaces that last little stretch in town here. And that'd be running sanitary, or sorry, storm sewer all the way up to the intersection at Norman there. You see kind of also show it, show that sidewalk on these sheets, pad ramps that we have kind of in that intersection of Murphy and and Fourth Avenue. And again up at the intersection of crossing Parent Street there. Sheet uh, sheet forty-eight shows the alley and this kind of demonstrates that that profile. That we were talking, that I brought earlier, um, especially on the on the middle and north block there. That that point five, point four-five is is our is our minimum grade design, so that's why we added that that curb there to make sure that we have. More of a workable concept for the contractor to make sure we have that that flow in that in that curb line. Any questions on, and then also that runs into the page thirty, or forty-nine too. Any questions on on the alley? Alright. Page fifty-two is Broadway. As we talked about, uh, there are two parking areas along Broadway, one for the REA facility and the dental office. And on the south side and on the north side is for for the church. Both of those are. Matching kind of the existing bump outs with the the one of the one of the concerns that was brought during the feasibility was the. The no parking and then kind of that transition uh, from the parking area to the resident to the north. All that will be kind of will be designated a no parking area, so that shouldn't make that conflict there as far as leaving that driveway we will see going looking to the south. As far as Broadway extending extending uh, storm sewer up from where the the connection was at the the highway project from two thousand twenty-one. Twenty-two and and bringing that north to the intersection of Parents. Leaving the existing storm sewer in place, which I believe was installed in two thousand twenty, two thousand, two thousand four, I believe. The north end of 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 Broadway at Parent, um, that system can stay in place. We'll have to. With our curb replacements up there, we'll have to, you know, replace the castings in those areas, but uh, the structures themselves and the and the pipe will remain in place. Page fifty-two is Parent Street. This will show kind of us extending storm sewer down Parent to uh, due to the new, the new road grades in the area. And to improve drainage in the area too, um, we did create a low point in in Parent that we had, so we had to extend storm sewer. Which was part of the feasibility extending storm sewer down down this direction anyway, um, and so there wasn't any additional cost to that, but. That shows that on page fifty-two. We also show the fact that, you know, this one is that that narrower footprint as far as that twenty-eight foot wide roadway. Maintaining the existing kind of south curb line there, matching that bit edge, you know, the existing bit edge with the new curb line. And building the road up from that way. Any questions on Parent? There are a last couple sheets here, uh, have to do with the the overlay on Thirteenth Avenue. Like I said, which which with these ones, um, just to mill an overlay, milling out the existing four inches of tumus. And putting it back with some as with some slight slight uh, profile changes to to improve that cross slope along the roadway. And that on the bottom of the sheet there is is the profile that you can see that does exactly, um, match the existing profile. As due to cross slope improvements, so we have at least a, at least the the cross open one through there. We are laying that uh, that drain tile on on the west, sorry, east side of Thirteenth Avenue. Roughly four feet behind the curb. And through our design, we did determine that that drain tile. Getting our minimum grade on that drain tile and then connecting to the structures on the south side, uh, we will need to replace those structures. And and extend that that storm sewer that into that highway ditch to to make up for that depth increase for that. Any questions on Thirteenth?
No, we talked in the past about longevity of the tumus.
Yep.
And. What's the longevity of this road before we'd have to seal coat it or?
Thirteenth?
Yeah, Thirteenth.
We try to shoot for, I mean, good practice is resurfacing kind of like a chip seal after like about five years. Now, that's not always in the budget for communities to do that. They push that out to ten, fifteen years sometimes. But every little bit helps as far as making it making that work, so. That's probably what I would imagine this R T F U would be pushing towards probably a ten to fifteen year kind of chip seal in the future.
And that also depends on how much traffic a roadway gets.
Yep, with this being a dead end, one block, serving, I don't know, twenty homes or whatever it is over there, um, yeah. I can see that that longevity be pushed out a little further, so chip sealing in ten years isn't, should be okay.
So could we get ten years out of Broadway?
Out of Broadway for chip sealing? Um, well, we haven't done Dewey Street yet. And that's going on almost ten years now, right?
Right.
Yeah, so traffic should be bought this, yeah, I think it's actually a little higher on on Dewey Street compared to Broadway. Like Dewey Street actually is 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 higher than Fourth coming down, but um. So I would say it probably fall in the same timeline, that if we can, if we, common practice is to have that kind of that that three to five window, three to five year window. But that's all funding dependent on cities, so we should have ten to fifteen.
Just something to consider.
You talk, are you speaking about using different material or for plant budgeting for?
Budgeting.
Just your, like more of a maintenance project in the future. I think Mark does his kind of his uh, crack seals. Throughout the area. But this is more like we kind of, you put, you lay down kind of a an oil down and put kind of like a rock, it's really fine rock. Top of that, put oil top of that, over top of that again, kind of seal it in place and that keeps that water essentially providing more longevity throughout it.
Okay. And uh. Help me, Thirteenth, is that the one that's just passed like the ABC childcare there, okay?
ABC whatever.
Or TLC, TLC?
ABCs here.
Any more questions on the plans? The last thing I have, I guess before kind of go on over to your, on to you guys as far as consideration for approval of plans and then then uh, move forward to advertising. Do you want to touch base on the schedule for the project, um, timing they're here to. To the eighteenth to approve the plan essentially. If it does, if council does decide to move forward with plan approval, uh, we will then get. Our advertisement into the paper by the deadline on Friday, which puts it in the paper on the twenty-fifth, which is next Tuesday. And then we'd have a bid opening March twenty eighth, twentieth, that would maybe meet our minimum standards for our chapter four twenty-nine. The three weeks plus, at least three weeks of advertising. And then uh, and the opening bids, sorry, opening bids on the twentieth of March and then bringing those bids to the uh, April first council bid.
And that's not April fourth?
That's not April first, no. We are still having council bid, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I should have, uh, it's my birthday, so I was making sure.
Alright, hopefully it's a true. But I just want to touch base on that schedule. Um, I don't see an issue with that schedule since we are no longer, uh, do we mention it all? I'm not sure if we have, but. State aid is is uh, when we did our state aid, it's middle on Friday, um, there were some conversations between state aid, district and and the county, county engineer. That they essentially went the road of not going for state aid funds on their their small segment due to the the size of essentially what the funds they'll be getting. And so they won't be doing a state aid review on this sort of plans, so it eliminates any timeframe waiting for their comments. So that this plan approval isn't contingent on any stated comments, this is where it's at. So we should have no issue meeting or sticking to this schedule we have laid out in front of you right now.
So. The way I'm looking at it, Jared. The curb and gutter is gonna be pretty consistent on all the streets.
Yes.
We're not gonna have any big steep inclines or anything like we.
Like like on the downtown quarter, yeah, no, there that was due to the, sorry, the constraints with the meeting the ADA of the of the the building. Interest interestingly, no, we have except for in front of the the two commercial like, well, it's churches commercial, but. The commercial area on the south side of Broadway and the in the church on the north side. Everywhere else we are pretty much have a boulevard, um, so there shouldn't, that boulevard is gonna make up for that, that kind of difference in in drainage and grading, so.
Beyond that, as far as uh, some of the comments that came out of uh, the meetings from the community? Do you feel like we've met most of the concerns about the original plans and what we what we put together?
I believe we did.
With the alleys and the sidewalks?
Near the roadway sidewalks, parking, parking should be the same if not improved in in most areas or in all areas.
I could, Mr. Mayor. One thing too that it's important, there's a lot of existing conditions that kind of make it difficult. I think we did a good job of meeting most of those concerns, but there were some other things like buildings being so close or over the right of way. You know, garages, houses, you can't necessarily move all those things. So I just think it's important to recognize too, when you deal with an old part of town, there's a lot of those constraints in place that you have to navigate. And I thought that um, we did a good job at least getting around most of those issues or finding reasonable solutions.
And we're not, uh, I know we're taking trees down, we're putting trees in.
Yeah, um, I believe it's on the public side, it's not not including any private sanitary or like or lead service replacement side. Public side, I believe it's eighty-eight trees that we are removing and city staff will be doing the clearing before the end of March. And then uh, and then so we'll be putting back forty-four, installing forty-four new trees.
That was pretty typical with the prior project.
Sorry, what was that?
One for every two?
Yeah, yep.
Is there already, I'm trying to envision, we have some light. Light poles throughout as well, are are those needing to be taken down?
Yes, yep.
Same ones will be reused and put back up or are those being replaced?
Um, we are not proposing any new light poles themselves, um, those light poles, the lights in this corridor are on power poles, not on any like street lights poles. So those power poles, there are most, most of them I would say probably need to be relocated due to the new footprint of the road. I'm thinking how long on like on Fourth Avenue for sure, like that corridor, um, those will need to be relocated. We're working with the small utilities, they've seen the plans, we've had multiple preliminary utility meetings with them. They are where they need to be moving those and adjusting them as cor- uh, accordingly. There shouldn't be any, for that work, there shouldn't be any cost to say that's all, their their facilities are within city driveway. So that's on them to either hold when they're digging around it or relocate it due because it's in now it's gonna be in a sidewalk or in a in a pad ramp or move it right, so.
Okay, so will it, will it, will it just be reusing what we have and moving them if we need to?
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're gonna replace the pole, it sounds like the wood poles themselves, I'm not sure if they're gonna do that or not, but.
That would be on them though.
That would be on them, yes.
Oh, okay, alright.
I just have a couple more, I just.
Yes.
Just want to make sure the council's aware, um, Jared had mentioned service laterals, so in addition to the um, replacement of like lead services. Those properties that are required to replace their service lateral will be coordinated with this project like we did with Dewey. So um, that's already was in their preliminary assessment and estimate on that, but they'll bid that as well, I think separately though is what we decided to do.
We have, do you want separately?
Well, we have it, we kind of like.
Lead services separately.
Yep, or whatever, we 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 have it in the project, I can't remember which way we ended up going.
In our in our budget already, uh, now we do need to, like I said, during our next few months here before we start construction. We do need to coordinate with the homeowners, make sure that they won't sign the agreement with it that they want to be included with the product or if they feel they can get a better price. Either on their own or however they want to do that, then they can do that too, but it needs to be completed, as Sarah said, due to the ordinance, to meet our ordinance by the end of the project.
Yeah, and and so what I want to make sure the council's aware too, those affected parcels have to replace that service lateral. If they don't do it with our project, they need to do it on their own. We will start fines then if they don't do it. So it's usually in their best interest to try to coordinate on the pricing and the process because we can lump it all in. But if they don't do it, that doesn't mean they just get to kind of sit there, they have to do it, that's what the ordinance reads and that's what we require of the other projects, so. That'll be a part of this project. And then the other item I just wanted to mention was we do have fiber conduit in um, all sections of our portions.
Yeah, along Broadway, along Fourth Avenue and then along Third Avenue and then around to Fourth Avenue, like that loop. So not on Murphy between Fourth and Broadway and not on Parent between Fourth and Broadway, but.
But their service the other way, yeah. So we just wanted to make sure that was an option for us, um, in the instance, we have another provider that could come in or we could have some upgrades installed.
Yeah, uh, to your, circling back to your first comment on. If they don't do it with our project and kind of lump it in. And they decide to do it on on their own accord, but they don't do it, we would start fines.
Correct.
Wouldn't it be, would you be able to complete the project without them doing it? Wouldn't we just at that point do it and then assess them the the fee?
We we can, it's their side, it's their private service.
Yeah, they they give us permission to be on their property for that purpose, to, like we, so we'll have.
But don't you already have things dug up and ready to go?
That's why it makes sense to do it.
It'd be cheaper to to be done with a project that at least my anticipation, my understanding would be cheaper. Since it's more of a bulk, most like you said, most everything's already ripped up at the time.
Already ripped up.
Now there are, yeah, so.
So project's all wrapped up, everything's put back together and and everyone moves on, we would just keep on finding them until they hire a company to come out and do it for themselves?
Correct, and they would be on their own to do it then at that point, you know. Most people will do it, I mean, we we have agreements set up and and being able to roll it all in, it makes it easier, but we do have a few every once in a while that don't, you know, want to do it and. I wish to make it perfectly clear that they are subject to finding them, which adds up in a hurry too.
So with that, if they choose to do it independently, who would inspect that in order to make sure it's up the code or proper?
How have we been doing it since our INI study, Mark?
Oh, what's that?
Who's been doing the inspection since our, since we completed the INI study in fifteen?
Well, none have been done since then, but the ones in the houses. Any of them we've cleared up, you know, you know, staff has. So yeah, we go out and verify it's right and picture it and.
They televise it.
Seems to me in the best interest to do it when the project is going. I will say in twenty eighteen, everybody signed on to the, that was over here.
Yeah.
Everybody signed on.
Makes sense, so, okay, alright.
Alright, any more questions on our plans for tonight? Alright, well, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Alright, well, that moves us on to considering the approval of resolution twenty-two, twenty twenty-five oh two, approving the plan specs to advertise for bids.
And I'll just, you know, this was, this is part of the four twenty-nine process, we have to do this resolution. The bond, I did consult with the bonding agent, they reviewed this as well to make sure we have it all included. There may be a portion on the Thirteenth Avenue that we will have to fund with cash from that other funding source, um, but we are including everything at this point. But we are including everything at this point um, at the recommendation of the bonding agent. So what you have there is just essentially saying we can go to bid and meeting that next step in the four twenty-nine process. Any questions on that or?
So then do we need to make a, a motion to approve this and then do we also have to make a motion for the, for the paper?
No, if you approve this, you're authorized in the engineer to move forward with advertising of bids.
Okay.
I made the motion to approve resolution twenty, twenty-five dash oh two, approving planned specs to advertise for bids.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving into old business. Continue discussion on council priorities and goals. Well, I know one of the, if I've been thinking about old business here, before I lose it, we had um, discussed opportunities in finding ways to celebrate uh, the one hundred and twenty-five years of Foley. I even made a snazzy video uh, just to see what, you know, to throw it out there to the, to the masses to see if they had any ideas. Couple of comments. You know, fireworks, music, you know, all the things, uh, but with emphasis of being, it, it being done on Foley Fun Days, we're going to kind of already have a lot of those things in place. And so there was the one comment on fireworks at least. We also had a conversation uh, last meeting if we wanted to do some sort of poll or Facebook. Poll, if you will, um, to, to elicit any further responses or comments about what the community would like to see us do as far as celebrating one hundred and twenty-five years? Is that something we'd still maybe want to try to do?
I was hoping there'd be more discussion with your video, but there wasn't much, so if you want, I can, we can send out a survey monkey or something.
Why not? Yeah, just throw, throw something on Facebook?
Is there anything specifically just, you know, activities they'd like to see or maybe just if you had some ideas, I'd be interested in that?
Fireworks is easy, an easy one to think of.
I mean, I think I heard dunk tank was thrown out on yours.
Oh, yeah.
You might have seen that on the, on, on, as a comment. I don't know what else.
I like the idea of a dunk tank.
Oh, the dunk tank, yeah, I like that, okay. Dunk, dunk tank, uh, dunk tanking, uh, city officials?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Maybe uh, uh, being able to put a little history together of how Fun Days started to where we are now.
That's a good idea.
Fun, Fun Days or Foley?
Well, Fun Days.
Fun Days?
Yep. And Foley, well, we've already done Foley, a history of Foley, we've done, people have done a couple of.
We've done, we did a lot of that during the expo, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I know we have a bunch of history of Foley stuff that we did during the expo for a number of years, so maybe something else we can. Most people forget those answers.
Yeah.
So just a random idea that, excuse me, that just came to me. Since we were talking about including some of the citizens at the gardens, could we find the oldest Foley resident? And like include them somehow in the parade or, I don't know, just an idea.
Well, I would say our, our oldest who is one hundred.
Yeah.
Is fairly with it.
Spry?
Def- well, Spry is a hundred year old lady can be.
As much as he can.
She has some issues, but nothing that would prevent her from being on the main float. Nothing that would prevent her from even talking about swimming in the pool when it was that very first pool that was actually better than anybody in the state because it wasn't a pool. So she remembers those things, she's got total memory, she plays five hundred and four times a week.
I know that the gardens usually has a float, so maybe they could put her in as Foley's oldest citizen. I don't know, just, just throwing it out there.
I know they're getting ready to, to design the float now. I think she should be the parade, whatever they call it.
The grand marshal, is that what they call it? Okay.
I think that makes more, more sense to me.
I don't know how, um, if the grand marshal's been selected or not yet, I know that's handled through the civic group. I'd have to check on that, I'm not sure where they're at with that process.
It's the citizen of the year, isn't it, usually the grand marshal?
Oh, yeah, it might be, so. Or do we always just have the citizen of the year in?
It's a one either question, but that's how I wrote about it.
Okay, I'll check with Anita, okay.
Alright.
We could probably have more than one if we want, probably.
Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, if you come up with something, I'll shoot me an email or text or something, yeah.
I mean, maybe it'd be interesting to even hear, you know, the feedback, you know, do they want fireworks?
Yeah.
You know, maybe they don't want anything, I don't know.
Well, I think, um, you know, the other thing too is if we piggyback off of Fun Days, we can, you know, leverage some of the existing activities and stuff and that'll help with, you know, saving costs and stuff associated with it, so. I think that's a good plan. I'll get some ideas.
Yeah, I mean, and, and there's not to say we couldn't uh, piggyback off maybe some of our uh, thriving communities events.
Yeah.
Just as, you know, council and, and such being represented in those events, maybe doing, maybe adding something to those events just to, I don't.
Yeah.
Add to celebrating one hundred and twenty-five years, you know, what those things are, I don't know, but.
No, I think that's a great idea because they, those bring out a lot of people, you know, we have good weather and it's a way to kind of tap into people's existing plans and.
Yeah.
Have we done a street dance?
Not beyond the Foley Fun Days, I don't think.
Well, that, I didn't know Foley Fun Days did one or does one or not.
They do, yeah, they do one.
Okay.
Weather permitting.
After the parade is the, probably the biggest one, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, right.
Maybe we'll do like a poll and kind of just see where people land, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I, and we could certainly, we could entertain doing something beyond Foley Fun Days, I guess, that also, so.
When were we incorporated?
Do we know?
Nineteen hundred.
No, I know, I'm.
Oh, the date, I don't know.
I mean, the day.
I want to say, just December, you don't?
March twenty-first.
March twenty-first?
Oh, well, that's not a good celebration date.
We got to get on this.
We're working on something independent as well.
Okay. See, he knows more than I know.
Alright. Other items as far as some of the things we were, we've been discussing from a priorities and goals standpoint. One of which was the, you know, discussions around development and tools like TIF and tax abatement. I believe many of us have received invitations to the uh, upcoming TIF meeting, TIF training, maybe it would be a better way to say it.
It's TIF training, yeah. If you have an RSVP directly to BEP and you want me to, I mean, who? I do have a couple I, I submitted already, but I want to make sure.
I might have, I don't remember.
Dabber you.
I'm going to say something that I might regret, I don't drive at St. Cloud.
Do you want to ride with me?
I wouldn't.
Meet you here and we'll drive together?
Yeah.
Sounds good, and, that's, yeah, that's not fun, you are in already.
I'm already registered.
And you're in.
Gary?
What's, what's the date on that?
The thirteenth of March, I'll check my calendar.
Thursday. It's in, it's in, it's in March, uh, from approximately one to five.
Correct.
Yep, one o'clock at St. Cloud State, and, and if you need a ride, we can carpool.
What date, what's the date, March?
It's a Thursday, March thirteenth.
Fourteenth?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, okay. Because I'm, I'm on vacation somewhere in there, but I'm okay with that thirteen, I think I weigh that, yeah.
Okay, so, yes.
So then you would, then you would post then that there'll be a forum? Good, I think that'll be really good.
We do have, um, I know I had one ADA, two ADA, I think that are coming already too, so that's good. We should have, yeah, good turnout, it's really, it'll be good information, I think, for everybody.
Have we heard back from Tri County?
Okay, I did hear back from the purple, purple cats, is that what it's called, right?
Yep.
Um, so I had a, a nice conversation with purple cats. She's coming back to me with numbers on what one of these clinics costs. I'd like to get those numbers before we commit to Tri County is my concern. Because I don't want all of a sudden we commit two thousand there and then all of a sudden we need another, you know, thousand or two thousand. So that's, I did not give her a firm answer at Tri County yet because I was hoping to hear back from the cats lady. But what, what we do have to understand with the, the cats, that's basically where they come in with a mobile unit to spade and neuter the cats. Um, and essentially they can help with adopting out, but they don't house them or take them. They just provide that to stop the population from.
They're more or less a fix and release type thing.
Correct, yep. Um, and she did kind of give me some information to, like, we're not the only community that has seen this explosion in cats. She said, it, it kind of started during COVID, we've had some mild winters. Um, and she said what's happened is she said the cats are actually in heat because of the mild winters, like twice as much as they normally are. That's why you have so many cats. And so she said, you know, we could see this kind of fluctuate, but she said if you do this program, they have seen it slow the growth of the population considerably. She said she would also work with trying to find us some funding partners because she said there are some donators that can um, sometimes contribute to a local program. Um, and then the, the unit's out of Wisconsin, so they would come in, you know, for a day or two or whatever we'd set up. So she said sometimes it's helpful if we can partner with another city or another community and maybe they can come here and then come there and it, it just brings the cost down. But, you know, she's estimated, it's probably seventy, eighty bucks at least per animal. So that would be a city cost if we don't find any other funding sources. I think that was about it, Gary, I think we talked. Very nice lady, I mean, there's a website too.
I know, I know, she was going to check and see what she could do with the numbers, that's the last I heard.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't gotten any numbers back.
Okay.
But she had, she, you must have talked to, or she talked to somebody at the vet clinic, she said, no, I was expecting your call. So she went, she answered the phone right away. Um, and, yeah, she was very helpful. And she just locally kind of volunteers for this organization, that's how she's connected with them. Um, and tries to assist, like, she does try to assist if we can get homes for these animals after they're, you know, fixed and just, you know, because she just cares about the animals and what's happening.
I don't think they do anything with their dogs, do they?
Nope.
Yeah, but our cats seem to be the biggest problem.
The cats are, and that's very common. She said we're, we're not, many communities are having the same problem we are. Um, Big Lake did a clinic, I guess. She mentioned that as one.
I could talk also to Rough Start because with them already spayed or neutered, they may be willing to take a certain number in for fostering and then adopting out. Or even helping cover the cost.
Okay. And then as far as the RFP that's out and?
Yeah, um, that's out and we've gotten a few questions on that already. So, uh, definitely think there's going to be interest, at least there's people looking at it, so that's a good sign. Um, I'm also applying for um, the state tier-two funds for housing. Are out for the intent to apply, apply this week, so I will be submitting for that. Um, I'm going to probably submit, I, I'm trying to figure out the best way to submit it because there's that tier-two and then there's also the housing infrastructure money. And so the infrastructure money might fit better with our RFP proposal, whereas the tier-two funding might help with the RFP proposal and also rehab. And so we'll be submitting an intent. Um, and this basically just says we're going to apply and then there's an official RFP that comes out later this week. So they just want an idea on who's interested. So we'll be submitting applications on that. And I know, um, like BEP and the county are submitting on the housing trust, so we're hoping between all these different applications, you know, something will help that'll support our, our communities. So that, you know, we'll, we'll keep you in tune on that. I do have another grant um, that we were awarded, but I can't tell you about publicly yet. So I'll let you know when I can. They're going to release that um, at a different agency first before we can release it on our end, so.
Has Isaac talked at all about how the house is working towards the budget at all, has he mentioned?
I have not, no, not from him. My correspondence with him was really just strictly about, we need a bonding bill for the bridge funds at this point. I know that the house, the last I heard they were working on is delaying paid family leave and um, some of these whistleblower things were kind of moving through. I haven't heard about a budget yet. Um, but if anybody wants to, you know, reach out, it's never a bad idea.
Any other new business?
Well, the uh, corner building is for sale, they have a sign on there. Is that, I don't know what they're asking for, I didn't get a chance to look at it yet, but there is. Is that something that's long-term for us?
We're talking about the customer relations?
Customer relations? No, no, Graham's building.
The old liquor, municipal liquor? What's the price on it right now?
I don't know.
Who's, which, which one is this?
It dropped, that's the old, where the old municipal liquor used to be, so it'd be directly across from the Legion Lock.
Is that the Terry's?
Terry Tavern?
Yep.
Oh, so it's always been for sale, they just lowered it?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, they've lowered it a couple times.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe they have new realtor on that though, don't they?
Yeah, they do, they have a new realtor.
Oh, they might, yeah. I don't know, have you been in the building? I don't know what kind of condition it is in.
It needs to be tore down.
Yeah.
I've been in it multiple times.
Long-term, I mean.
It doesn't surprise me.
I like the, I like the, uh, the idea, you know, when we start, when we, you know, as we learn about TIF and, and uh, TIF redevelopment. You know, there's, the intent behind it is identifying certain areas of a, you know, in this case our downtown where, you know, maybe some spots would be tore down and, and the developer would develop up and there's TIF opportunities. Everyone wins, but it is advantageous for the city to own or purchase the property if it's available. It actually makes things easier and in some cases cheaper.
It would be, um, if you want to discuss, you know, that further and the strategy about possibly offering on that, we would do that in closed session. Just like we did with the Herbs property, able to purchase that, you know, we've, we've done a number of them. So if that's something you want to do, we can do that, if you need to have the attorney here, let me know. But we do not have to publicly disclose if we wish to offer on anything like that.
It's out there.
I, I think buying property downtown would be advantageous.
Do you want us to schedule a session on that or?
Would we be able to talk about others?
Yep. We just have to list them both. I would just list them on the agenda on what we're discussing. And you basically just have to disclose what, you know, what you're talking about. You don't have to give all your, but the public has a right to know.
Customer, the other corner building.
Yeah, the other corner building might be another one.
Yep.
Which one is that one, the other corner?
The customer relations.
The customer relations.
Would you, would you think that we should schedule a meeting after our TIF meeting? I think that would be better, so we have.
I think we should start a meeting next month.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, like in April or something or?
Yeah, we should, yeah, depending on what, what's on the calendar for April first.
I think awarding bids is, I mean, pretty straightforward.
Okay.
It's going to be great.
Yeah, tune in again.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, do you have anything else?
Anything else new business?
Just going to lower down the list here. Going down the list here.
I did ask Chief McMillan, and she couldn't be here. I just gave her the agenda, and she said, just priorities, she, generally things, you know, she talked about before, some attractions, you know, industrial housing growth, she thinks is, you know, critical. But she also wanted to mention, you know, as we grow, all departments are going to have more needs. So, she just wanted everybody to keep that in mind. In some specifics, she said, you know, our squads, radios, park cameras, staff, as we talk, siren, too, if we develop out on the south side, siren or emergency notification might become an issue, more of an issue. So, she just wanted to pass those along.
Okay.
Well, Mark, do you have a plan on your building yet?
I can sure get one.
I've asked before.
How much money do I have to spend? I mean, I haven't been authorized to.
No. Just scratch it down on a piece of paper, so we have some kind of idea of what we could be looking at, you know. Doesn't have to be formal. I mean, square footage-wise.
To get that stuff, we're going to need a lot more people involved than, you know.
A tape measure and two people. How much more do you want to add? Just general it.
Do we, do we own the current building, right?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Does it share a common wall with the meat market?
Yeah.
So, if you were to tear that down, is there a way to, do you basically leave the middle then, or?
They'd have to leave that common wall.
You know what I'm saying? Like, if you were to, you're talking about like TIF, or, you know, if we wanted to do something with it? Because that, I would anticipate that's going to get torn down.
That would, the building actually come down, yeah. Nope, that's a good point. Again, property we own.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, as far as this, this was called new business slash old business? Hearing none. Mayor's comments in open forum?
I just got one question.
State your name, address, and take a, take a minute, let us know what your comment is.
Paul Strang, Street by One Dewey Street. I've just gone, there's a few rumors going around that the city was, they may reverse their opinion on licensing a cannabis shop in the city of Foley themselves versus giving it the control over to Benton County. I was wondering if there's any truth to that rumor that the city wanted to take that control back from Benton County.
I don't think it was take control back.
Correct me wrong, we did, we did that, or passed it saying that Benton County, the city of Foley won't be issuing a cannabis shop license. That will be given to Benton County, correct?
The county will, part of the joint powers agreement, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yep, the county will allow up to four.
Correct.
Within county.
Yeah, income, yeah.
Yep.
I just making sure that didn't change. That's, that's what I thought. I didn't hear nothing otherwise, just other, just people talking, because I just checked it out.
And all four of them could end up in Stock Rapids?
Yeah, right, right, exactly. I remember, I was here for that discussion, I missed the last two months meetings, that could be a C M. I just got a compliment from Mark the other week, Saturday, the crews were up cleaning up snow, and I shoved the snow out my sidewalk on Fourth Street, and pushed it out towards the street. The loader guy, without me, he would say anything. As he came by, he cleaned the pile up, and so there wasn't a berm out there, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. My, and of course, it goes without saying, as I let them know already, thank you, Mark, and thank the first responders for, for helping with my child last Sunday. I really appreciate their very quick response, you know, on a Sunday, and it was, it was nice to have that support. So, thank you to them and your team.
Thank you.
Good, all right. Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.